I'd like to call the July 20th, 2023 school board meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January 12th, 2023, on by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenox Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Uplifted Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Conity?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Polino?
Present.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. Downing?
Here.
Okay, we have motion.
We're going to go into executive session. Be it resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying; confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload; and confidential personnel matters. Subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to resume our meeting. Thank you for waiting. I think we're pretty much on time, five minutes late, so thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our superintendent.
Thank you for president Downing. So, welcome to our July board meeting. It's sad how fast the summer is going. I see some students over there, and they're all nodding in unison, right? You're going too fast? You're doing your summer reading?
I can.
All right, very good, very good. Working on it? Good. All right, so I know I did this in June, although no, our June board meeting was before graduation, but once again, I just wanted to congratulate our class of 2023 and congratulate all of our eighth graders who are moving on to the high school in a few short weeks. Last week, we welcomed our summer enrichment students. Our academic enrichment academy includes our summer music programs, our bridge to algebra classes, high school credit recovery. Any other programs I missed? I think I've outcovered them.
Yes, I think you hit our enrichment.
Yeah, so I just want to thank Assistant Superintendent Zalinski and the entire administrative staff for helping us get our third summer enrichment program off the ground.
Record number of attendees, over 300.
Yes, over 300, yeah, fantastic, so it's definitely a popular program. Last week, we also welcomed our extended school year students, and during ESY, those students work on social skills where they get to practice those skills on quite a few plan trips. So I want to thank Mrs. Krokowski and Mr. Bond for helping us get that program off the ground, and of course, to Mrs. Strino, who is the administrator for the program. So to keep going with good news, this past Sunday, we had an amazing program called Stuff the Bus, and that was made possible by the Seabreeze Carers Community. And here's a video that Mr. Lightold is playing that Miss Sylvia took of all of the items that were donated. So they certainly did stuff the bus. We drove that bus over to Seabreeze, and on the left-hand side, that's our conference room. So Mrs. McCarron and Mrs. Dynak are in the process of going through all of those donated items for distribution, so it was a great idea. I wanted to share the... This is the flyer that we had posted on our website, so it's called Stuff the Bus, and again, took place this past Sunday from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. So we just want to thank the entire Seabreeze community for their generosity. The amount of school supplies that are in our conference room is very, very impressive, so we'll get that out to our students very soon. And that concludes my comments. I just wanted to wish our families continued enjoying the summer. It's been hot, but that's what summer is all about, and we are going to continue to get our schools ready to open for September. We have a lot going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lots. And I'm just going to read a letter, a thank you note that I received on behalf of the board, and it has, "Dear Mrs. Downing, thank you for the $125 John Ives Scholarship. I am honored to be the recipient of this award, and this scholarship will be put to good use as I work to obtain my mechanical engineering degree at Johns Hopkins University this fall. Thank you for playing a role in making this become a reality. Sincerely, Jared Danko." So thank you for the... Thank you, Jared, and good luck to you in your future years at Johns Hopkins. Great school. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Is... An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments should be addressed to the board president, one issue at a time, limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. And just keep in mind that this is a board meeting to perform board business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow." Okay, seeing, I think we have some people over here. Okay, who wants to go first? Or are you going together? Remember to state your name, okay?
My name is Carolina Bonfanti, and I am a student at Lacey Township Middle School. I am completely petrified to be in this room, public talking. I am going into eighth grade, and a problem I am having is the budget cuts. There is a specific teacher important to our school getting cut because of the whole budget situation, and his name is Mr. Browson. My friends and I came here a few months ago to talk to him and about the budget cuts, but now we have more reasons on why he should come back. Music is important in all of our lives. It's everywhere we go. Mr.... Mr. Browson is a music teacher and teaches plenty of musical instruments and teaches us on the music industry. On June 16th, 2023, I started a petition to get him back. I have over 800 signatures to show support for him. I will read out some of the comments students and parents have said. Sorry, you're going to have to wait for like a second. I have to pull them up. From one student, "Mr. Browson is like a dad to me, and he's the only music teacher that I really liked." From another student, "Mr. Browson has done so much for everyone he's ever taught. He's such a warm-hearted person, and he is so good at what he does." From, I think, a parent, "There are many reasons for signing this petition for Mr. Browson. My daughter had him as a chorus teacher in fifth and sixth grade. She also had the privilege of having Mr. Brea as a marching band director for one year. He's a kind and caring teacher who goes above and beyond with his students." From a parent, "Please keep Mr. Browson. He's so dedicated and committed to students. He relentlessly works hard to provide the students a music education through the pandemic. It would be a detrimental..." Sorry, I can't pronounce that word. "...loss for the students who wish to pursue music." From a student. From a student, "He is an amazing teacher. He loves all of his students, and it shows. He does not deserve to lose this." From another student, "I love Mr. Browson. He's the reason why I joined band and continue doing band. He will be very sad if he does not continue teaching us." And from a parent, "Mr. Browson is one of the best teachers I have ever seen. He brings out the best in students. He supports the students and can boost their confidence. My daughter loves him, and we love for what he has done for her and all students." Yes, the... Sorry. "June 16th, last day of school, we threw him a party for him in the chorus room, and over 30 through 40 chorus slash band kids attended the party. Everyone in the chorus room that day was, in fact, crying intensely over one teacher, that being Mr. Browson. That shows that Lacey Middle School cares for Mr. Browson. He has made a big impact on Lacey Township Middle School and Mill Pond Elementary School. He should stay because he has changed us. I know you guys can't automatically get him back, but I know I can make an attempt to make a change. I will not let my friends speak how they feel. Thank you for listening, and please take the time to reconsider cutting Mr. Browson."
And you did a great job. Thank you.
Hold on, sorry, just got to pull up. Hello, and I'm George Dixon. I'm a student at Lacey Middle School, and we have come here to explain about our teacher, Mr. Browson. We are here again in hopes of bringing him back. As of today, we have 802 signatures at the time, 5:10 PM. Today, this whole school year, we have been working and trying to save our teacher, Mr. Browson, and his job. We know it's not just a simple yes, and there's a lot of stuff to get worked out, but even though it's a hassle, if you guys say yes to bring him back, it's also been a hassle for us. We've almost been working for nine months to get him back. I know there's tons to get worked out, and I hope everything isn't worked out for eighth grade, but even so, I hope we can get him back, and even though he was let go. Here, I speak for 800 people who have children or are the children of... Well, parents, who he has helped very much, and if you could find it to bring him back, it would mean more than the world to us. Even if he's brought back in the 2024 to 2025 for the next generation of students, even though we won't get to see him, I still want him to bring the joy he gave to us, to other students. I encourage you all to bring him back. And one more thing, for all of you, you can write to the governor to try to get more funds back to save more teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And do you have that petition with you?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so you can give it to Mrs. Silva.
Oh, you don't have it printed?
No, I have it on the phone that I do want to see.
No, you can send it to us.
All right.
Okay?
Hi, my name is Abigail Wright. I go to Lacey Township Middle School. I'm not good with words or public speaking. This is a new experience for me. I'm here on behalf of my teacher, Mr. Browson. I'd like to address the situation of my band teacher being let go. We had a farewell party for Mr. Browson on the last day of school, which around 30 to 40 kids came to. You heard most of the story from Carolina, but during COVID-19, he was a very well teacher. He supported and gave hope to everyone. I had many problems with mental health during COVID with, like, things being shut down and quarantine closing everything, but his class kept continuing going, and it gave me the hope that I needed, and I believe that he is an amazing teacher and that he should be brought back for all the future students, even if it cannot be for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Just watch your step when you walk up there.
Hi, I'm Judy Conlin from Forkett River. That was awesome, you guys. I love that you're still showing up for Mr. Browson. That's not why I'm here, though. My son, well, I have two sons. One is going to be a junior, and one is going to be a freshman. My junior, I remember telling me his freshman year about leaks in the high school every time it rains, garbage cans throughout the hallways, and it makes it crowded and all that, and just an overall health risk, and I took it with a grain of salt because he complains about everything and figured it would be resolved. But now he's going to be a junior, and I know it's still happening, and I was on Lacey Chatter the other day and noticed that there was a bunch of other parents talking about exactly this issue, and so I said, "Is anyone going to bring it up at a board meeting, or has anyone?" And a few people said, "Yeah, yeah, I'll do it." So I said, "Okay, well, I'll go, and I'll bring it up so that it's on record that parents are aware and concerned and nervous about the mold possibilities and anything else that could possibly go wrong with leaks and garbage cans blocking hallways and passages."
Yeah, this board has been talking about roof leaks and getting the roofs repaired.
Yeah.
Do you want to add what we're doing, or... I mean, we're applying for grants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't expect to get any kind of answer tonight. I just wanted it to go on record that parents are concerned about it, and so that it was on record. Great.
So let me just make a couple of comments about that, and then if Miss Sylvia wants to jump in. So we have both a facilities committee of the board, along with a finance committee of the board, and these are topics that we have been talking about. But most recently, we did just have two rooms tested, so when things are brought to our attention, we have the responsibility to work with a company called Ahira, and they come in and they do a thorough test, and then they provide a very thorough report, which the board members have reviewed. So whenever these issues are brought to our attention, you know, we act on it immediately. That's not to say that, yes, we have leaks. We have many leaks, but that is another topic that we've been talking, because our buildings are aging, and we have been talking about what approach we are going to take, not only at the high school, but all five other schools.
Right.
So if you have specific questions, feel free to give me a call.
Yeah, no, I don't. I just wanted to make sure that it was on public record, that it had been brought up and talked about, and we're all well aware that there are contracts, and there's a lot of red tape and things. It's not just a simple fix, but I just wanted to make sure that it was said out loud to people that actually have any kind of...
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
And on tonight's agenda, we do have quite a few projects that we are approving to address just that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Kaylee Hollister. I'm also a student at the Lacey Township Middle School. I'm going into eighth grade, and just like my friends are here to explain, I'm here about Mr. Browson as well. I don't know, I don't have like a script or anything to say, but I just wanted to say that Mr. Browson is like a second dad, and I really think you guys should consider bringing him back. You guys bring all the sports back, and you guys keep the sports, but what I see is the first to be cut always in every school district is the arts, the music, the drama, the band. Why is it always the arts? We have so many sports coaches and so many things that we can do for the sports, but what about the arts? We don't do anything for the arts, and I think it's a little upsetting because we have a stadium for this coach and this for this coach, and it's a little, you know... So I think you guys should reconsider, and also, speaking on behalf of the 800 people that care about him, it proves that he is really well thought about, and everybody thinks about him in a different way. So I just wanted to speak about that. Also, about the paraprofessionals that were cut, too, we can bring some of their jobs back because they're just as much as needed as Mr. Browson is as well. And some of the teachers that don't really want their jobs, they come to the school, they teach, and they teach children. I'm sorry if you guys are any teachers, but they teach your students to be rude, or they don't teach them. They just sit at their desk all day and critique everything that you do, little by little by little, and they don't, and kids don't say anything because they're afraid that their grades are going to drop, because they're afraid of what their teacher's going to do to them. So I think we should really consider if the teachers that don't want to teach and just are going to sit at their desk all day and critique everything that you do, maybe give their salary to a teacher that's in need and wants their job instead of keeping a teacher that doesn't want their job. So I really think you should consider, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to board committee reports. Who wants to start? Mr. Polino, would you like to start?
No, I don't.
No?
No, I didn't actually pull up my report.
You want Mr. Peters to go first?
Sure.
Are you ready?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Perfect. Ms. Conlin, was that your last name? Conlin, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you. If you go to the school website, you'll be able to see on the facilities chair, you'll be actually able to see the facilities' agenda, what was on there, what we discussed, and that was part of our discussion. We did, our results came back negative on two of the rooms that we tested, that there wasn't on there whatsoever. So just to let you know that, you know, you don't have to come here to public comment for the record. For the record, you can just go on the website and look at our agenda. It's on there, okay?
But you're always welcome to come.
And you can always call if you have questions. So, speaking of facilities meeting, Mr. Polino filled in for Mr. Armato, it was myself, Mr. Conity, and Ms. Sharon Silva. We discussed the STEM room. It's a new STEM room we have going up in the high school. It's going to be two classrooms up there. Coming along good, hopefully should be ready for September.
Yes.
Right? Looking good. The Forkett River Roof, Forkett River School is getting a new roof. We're waiting on permits for that from the town. The fire alarm project we discussed, HVAC updating we discussed, and we had a little learning lesson on SEER value. And we learned what the value of SEER was. It's the efficiency of the actual unit when you purchase an HVAC unit, and trying to push towards more of an expensive unit to get better outcome, more energy efficient, more economical for the school and the budget we have bills. The wrestling room, we went down and we took a look at that the other day. That's still in litigation. What's happening there? Synergistics. What's that?
Litigation.
Not litigation, negotiation. We're waiting...
Conversation.
Conversation, I'm sorry. I used the wrong word. Thank you. Synergistics. For those who do not know what synergistics is, it's a company that the board approved a while ago to monitor the entire district and all the buildings as far as energy and efficiency. And we have a gentleman that's currently on our payroll right now, is a part-time employee that is a facilities manager at another school district and works here part-time, going through the building, checking HVAC leaks, water leaks, toilets running, majority of things, so on timing, but he also has access to our systems via computer. So he can actually turn the heat down or turn the air up or whatever it is at certain times. If the building is to be vacant for the weekend, he can go in and make adjustments to that. Unfortunately, our systems are so outdated, a lot of them, that we cannot, we don't have the ability to go online with a computer and make adjustments there and there. So we are looking in the future of replacing all of our units, which some are 25 years old, we can't even get parts from anymore, and we're looking into refurbishing them and bringing them up to date, making them more efficient, and making them more into 2024 compatible, where you can go online and you can make adjustments here and there, turn them on and turn them off, and so forth. Also, our truck for our facilities department is shot, and we're in need of a new one, so we're shopping around, looking for a new truck for our facilities, and that is about it.
Thank you. Good? All right. Cheryl, you're going to do the minutes for policy tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Am I starting that now?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to say, can I just say a comment real quick, because you didn't go through? Are we doing...
Our board comments come next on the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Okay. Okay, everyone, so this is the minutes of the policy committee meeting. The members present were Kim Klaus, chairperson, myself, Cheryl Armato, committee member, Jack Conity, committee member, and Dr. Pereira, superintendent. New policy regulations for review and/or discussion. The committee discussed the following policies and regulations. Discussion followed. These items will not be placed on the board agenda for action. Further discussion will take place in future meetings. R2624 grading system. Dr. Dowd presented a data analysis of the 2223 implementation of Safety Net. Discussions followed. P5511 dress and grooming. A discussion took place regarding the K-12 dress code, K through 12 dress code. A minor revision will be made to the dress code guidelines. There is no impact to policy 5511. P5756 transgender students, review and discussion. Board attorney Padula provided the committee with information regarding the lawsuits by several other school districts related to policy 5756. Discussion followed. The policy will be discussed again next month. American flags in the classroom. The committee discussed whether a policy exists about what flags are displayed in classrooms. Discussion followed. Job descriptions. The committee reviewed revisions made to the job descriptions for board office confidential secretary. In addition to minor revisions, the title will also be changed to administrative assistant. The job description will be board-approved on July 20th, 2023. P5337 service animals. The committee reviewed several versions of policy 5337. The district does not currently have policy 5337. Discussion followed. The committee will continue to review this policy for possible adoption at a later date. The committee reviewed and discussed the following policies and regulations, which will be placed on the July 20th, 2023 agenda for first read. P2419 school threat assessment team. On August 1st, 2022, the governor signed into law NJSA 18A 1743.4, requiring school districts to establish threat assessment teams in schools for the 2324 school year. The purpose of a threat assessment team is to provide schoolteachers, administrators, and other staff with assistance in identifying students of concern, assessing those students' risks for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and delivering intervention strategies to manage the risk of harm for students who pose a potential safety risk, prevent targeted violence in the school, and ensure a safe and secure school environment that enhances the learning experience for all members of the school community. Strauss Esme developed policy guide 2419 that aligns with the statute in order for boards to have a policy adopted for the beginning of 2324 school year. P6112 reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. An OFAC, Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. Audit indicated that Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Act of 2006 has been recently renamed to the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act. Policy guide 6112 has been updated to include this revision and is mandated. R6115.01 federal awards funds internal controls allowable ability of costs. An OFAC audit indicated the school district should have a procedural regulation to include, among other things, a description of the process used in the district for grant and budget development through the closeout of a grant. In addition, OFAC recommended the district's regulation should include a required training tool and guide for employees to be developed locally by the district. Strauss Esme developed a new regulation guide 6115.01 that provides a basic process a school district may use for federally funded programs and grants. P6115.04 federal funds, duplication of benefits. A federal integrity audit requires a school district to have a policy that addresses duplication of benefits. Duplication of benefits occurs when a person, household, business, government, or other entity receives financial assistance from multiple sources for the same purpose, and the total assistance received for that purpose is more than the total need for assistance. Strauss Esme developed a new policy guide 6115.04 that requires a school district to identify and prevent duplication of benefits. P6311 contracts for goods and services or services funded by federal grants. An OFAC audit indicated a school district needed a policy guide requiring vendor suspension and disbarment checks completed by the school district for the purpose of goods and services funded by a federal grant. Almost done. Bear with me. PR 9140 citizens advisory committee. Policy guide 9140 is a longstanding policy guide establishing citizens advisory committees that are required for some federal and state-funded programs. However, over the years, Strauss Esme Associates has included a funded program requirement for a citizens advisory committee and a specific policy guides addressing the program statute and other administrative codes. Therefore, policy guide 914 is no longer mandated. Co-curricular, no agenda items to discuss. Safety and security, no agenda items to discuss. LTASA, no agenda items to discuss. Other. Architect design. Dr. Pereira led a discussion about some concerns that a few board members had about the district's architect. Dr. Pereira also informed the committee that a change would require an RFP process to select a new architect. Discussion followed. Referendum discussion. Dr. Pereira discussed the need to consider going out for a referendum November 2024. Discussion followed. Food service discussion. A discussion was held regarding privatization of food services. Discussion followed. July board retreat and August board meeting date changed from 8:17 to 8:22. The committee discussed these two items for informational purposes. October conference, Dr. Pereira... Dr. Pereira informed the committee of the October NJSBA fall conference dates. Stuff the Bus, Seabreeze Adult Community Event. Dr. Pereira provided the committee with a summary of this past Sunday's generous event. The items donated were displayed in the conference room. Adjournment, I don't know if I can read this, approximately 6:30 PM. And next meeting is August 9th, 2023. Thank you for listening. I know it was long.
Thank you, Cheryl. Frank, you ready?
I am, thank you.
Okay, finance.
Finance committee event Thursday, July 13th. We started at 1:30. Myself, Mrs. Downing, Mr. Claus, Dr. Pereira and Ms. Sylvia were present. We also spoke about quite a few items at the facility committee. Spoke about the STEM project. We were updated on that. They're doing some construction on the hall for the STEM room. So they're moving forward with that. We spoke about the Fork River Roof Project. They're taking down some solar panels. They have to fix the roof there. We spoke about the fire alarm project. It's almost done. However, we couldn't pass a CO because there's quite a few defective smoke alarm heads and lights, so they're being replaced. We spoke about HVAC projects, the wrestling room. We spoke about room 206 in the high school, I believe that was. It was tested for mold and everything else. Company, third party came in and everything was tested and all came out well. We spoke about synergistics. We're anticipating at least a 25% reduction in utilities usage during the course of the summer. Some of the things for finance that was not for facilities. We spoke about the grant committee. They're moving forward some more grants. We also spoke about an RFP for a new architect because some board members weren't, aren't happy with the current one. We spoke about some curriculum items, budget items that are on the agenda for tonight. School dude being one of those. We spoke about a settlement agreement from many years past prior to most of these board members being here. We spoke at length about the supervisor contract, which is gonna be voted on tonight. We also spoke about, not contracts, but the salaries for our non-lined personnel. We had an update about security from the New Jersey Department of Education. The state police were in and they did a review of our schools. And we have a list of items that we have to, they want us to bring up to speed, such as putting letters and numbers on windows and just certain things like that, certain doors that should be locked or unlocked. So we spoke about that. Technology, Dr. Pereira spoke about the new swipe in swipe out that's going to be for every staff member coming in the fall. Instead of signing in, they're gonna, they're gonna, come in, they're gonna use their ID to swipe in and swipe out. That's gonna keep a tab on where everybody is. God forbid, there's an emergency in the school system or in the district. We know where our personnel are that we could make, you know, if something happens, God forbid, we could account for everybody that's in the building. We know where people are. Cause people are allowed to go out for lunch. And if something happens, we don't wanna be looking for people who aren't even here and they're somewhere else. We have no items about transportation. We spoke about the board retreat, which just happened yesterday. The October conference, the stuff the bus. The meeting ended almost three hours later. And next meeting is August 7th. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay. Moving on, superintendent's comments. Do you have any more? Okay. Board members comment, board member comments. Sal, can I ask you to start down your end?
So I'll be real quick. I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but then I remembered I didn't get to do a formal thank you last month at graduation. Tonight, I'd like to thank Dr. Pereira, Mr. King, Mr. Brandis, and my fellow board members for bestowing upon me this great honor to be on stage at graduation, at the high school graduation, the middle school graduation, and for your patience and understanding and allowing me to hand out diplomas to my son in high school, my son at the middle school, and all the players that played for me in the last 15 years. For me and my wife, it was an honor to hand out those diplomas to our sons. And for me as a coach in this town for the last 15 years, getting to shake the hand of every one of my players, embrace them, hug them, tell them I love them, and wish them well. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to do that. It's much appreciated by me and Cheryl. Thank you.
Frank, do you have any comments tonight?
I do. So tonight, we are voting on ratification of our supervisory contract. And I expressed my concern with my fellow board members. They don't see things my way. In the district where we're hurting, I don't think that we should not support our administration, our staff, or anything. I think it's important to recognize them and give raises. But this contract we're voting on tonight, we have board members here to say we're for the children, for the children, but this contract is nothing for the children. This is an absorbent amount of raises going out and there's nothing coming back to our children. I will be voting no on it. It's not anything personal against any staff or member or organization. But the fact is that when this agreement was brought forward inadvertently by accident, and I totally believe that, I was not aware of the memorandum that was coming across. And it was, thanks to the board president Downing, it was pulled from the last meeting to discuss it. Unfortunately, it is what it is. It's going to pass. And I think that, I think the things should have been done differently. Again, there's different opinions on what they see in percentage wise, but you know, everything we give is a percentage and there is nothing given back. So anybody that wants to look at it, it's certainly out there to look at. But when I vote no, my biggest concern is I don't want people thinking I'm targeting anybody. But you know, we lost 43 teachers. We had money given to us by the township. And we're handing out this contract for five years. And what are we gonna say next year when we're in the same position? So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Jack, down your end?
Thank you. Thank you to Seabreeze, obviously, for Stuff the Bus. I wasn't here last month. So to the high school and head school graduates, congratulations. And it was brought to my attention within the last 24 hours that I now have to abstain on a handful of things that were never an issue. So part of it is the administrators and supervisor because my mother-in-law is a substitute food service worker. Works maybe a dozen times a year. And now one thing says I'm not conflicted, the other one says I am. So bear on the side of caution until there's a clear outcome. I'll be abstaining on some certain things. Not what I wanted, but it is what it is. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Cheryl?
First, I wanna thank you all for public comments tonight and to the children who came. You guys did great, so don't ever say that you're not great speakers because I think you guys are all great speakers and you might have a future in public speaking. So I wanna thank you for coming in on your summer vacation because I think that's commendable that you guys came here today. And for everybody else that spoke, I wanna thank you because what your children report back to you from what they see in school is very, very important. And please continue to come. And most of the things we do know, but we don't know everything. So if you, if your children tell you something, please come in and tell us by all means. Because I know this board wants the facilities to be great. We want our schools all to be wonderful. We don't want leaks. And we are working very hard and we do have plans that you will, you will see for the near future to improve our facilities. So your comment is very important, so please continue to do so. Also wanna thank Seabreeze for Stuff the Bus donations. That's fabulous. And that's it.
Good. Hey, Kim?
Yeah. Not much really of a comment, but more of a question to the board members if we can maybe have a quick conversation. It's about the outsourcing of the kitchen that keeps coming up. And it was in our committee again. And I believe it was in other committees. And I guess I just wanna know, like, what, what are we trying to achieve and accomplish that we don't have here? And I guess that's, I'm not clear on that. So if someone can explain it to me on why we're still entertaining this.
Cheryl, would you like to address that since?
Well, we don't really know until we find out what else out there is to offer out there. So I'd just like to find out from the different food services out there, what's available, maybe what would enhance our program. This is not to get rid of any employees. As we talked last year, every single employee would be retained. So for the employees, it wouldn't, it would be seamless. It's nothing that we change.
So you're saying that we would still employ our, so what we're looking?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, okay, just to be clear. So we would still keep our employees is what you're looking for?
Hundred percent.
But we're looking for new food ideas?
Well, no, it's not so much that.
Or food vendors?
It's, it's, they're, they can't say any specific vendors. You'd have to get more than one.
No, no, I'm just saying like, so what, are you looking to bring different food companies in? To provide the food?
They specifically, they specifically provide the food, but we can also get food at a reduced rate because there's buying power throughout the state of New Jersey. So they have different schools throughout the state of New Jersey. So what we pay, we pay X dollars. They have greater buying power, so we can get food more cost effective.
I have no issue bringing in other food vendors to bring in if there's, if someone wants a different, if the children are complaining that the food isn't good, you know, I would like to see a new menu, but I do not want our people to work for another company. I feel they're loyal. They've been with us for a long time. The morale is great right now. And I think even just this discussion alone is gonna put them on edge. So, but if you're saying that what we're at?
May I ask why? Because if they were not losing their job, they're keeping their salaries and seamless to them and nothing changes. And perhaps it could increase morale because maybe it would bring something better that we can't offer the employees.
Well, the people that work for our district are loyal to our district and our children as Lacy employees. A lot of them live here.
Yes, of course.
They've been here 15, 20 years, some of them. And perception is a lot in this town. They might feel that they're being tossed aside. This is, again, is just conversation.
Sure, of course.
But if you're saying that we're gonna keep the employees,
Hundred percent.
I have no problem researching other vendors to bring in. But I think before we do any of this, we need to talk to the food supervisor and ask what our complaints are. Because since Joe started, I haven't heard any complaints at all, unless they're just not being reported. But I heard that the kids are happy. He meets with them regularly. He does surveys.
He would still be with the organization.
No, I know. But I'm just saying like, if we're trying to improve the food, which is what we're talking about now.
And also lower the cost of the food, which we have a, yeah. Which we have budget issues right now, so anything that can, we can help the district.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
But I don't necessarily think, I'm sorry to cut you off. I don't necessarily think it would decrease morale. I actually know some other school districts where people were employed by the school. Other outside vendors came in and they're actually happier because they can work more hours if they choose. And I have some, I know somebody that actually collects unemployment in the summertime because she's, she works for an organization, which we can never even offer that. That's something that our district couldn't offer because they work for the school.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
There could be some pluses for them that we don't know. And this is not to say we would do it. It's to explore, to see if it offered a better opportunity. If it didn't, then absolutely no. But if, maybe it would enhance their, maybe it would enhance the program for the children and it might enhance the program for the staff as well.
So then you're, you are looking then to outsource them?
No, not at all.
Okay, so we're just talking strictly food?
No, so, so.
Food products.
So how it works is they would provide the food, but the employees, the employees stay. This is, this is.
I'm not talking about location. I'm talking about who pays them. Cause when you're saying stay.
No, no, we do not pay them. They would, Sharon, if you can just jump in there.
Either way.
Right.
Okay.
There's options. Yeah, so I.
So there's options. It's one, we're exploring options.
So I am not for having someone else pay our employees. Just so it's out there.
Okay.
It's been out there. It's not a secret. I think it opens up a can of worms because then we're gonna do busing. We're gonna do maintenance.
No, 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 that's.
Well, that's not true because you might not agree now, but then if we get other board members on, well, hey, we already took out the kitchen staff. So let's look for busing.
But you're not taking out the kitchen staff. You're leaving the kitchen staff in place. You're just.
I get what you're saying, but I'm saying if someone else pays them, they're called outsourcing. And tonight, we're gonna approve a behavior therapist. Hopefully she gets approved because we're trying to eliminate the companies that we, you know, work with. We're trying to get them all in-house. So I don't know. I just think it's.
Change isn't necessarily bad. Change sometimes can be good.
But it's not your position because you're not the one actually working.
So no, this is an exploratory?
Yeah.
Yes. Exercise, going out, just different and then just explore.
We're not making any decisions.
It's all exploratory.
It was brought up last year because there were, if you recall, there were public comments with food complaints.
Yeah.
This is not, this is not a slide at the current staff or the current person that's in charge. This is just to see if we can enhance the current program we have and to save the district money. We're constantly talking about saving the district money. Why can't we explore something that could potentially keep morale? I don't, listen, this should not be alarming to anybody. This is just exploring, kinda like the architect. We have a current architect. We may use that architect, but we're exploring. We may be able to find something else that we, we like better. I don't understand why that's an issue just to explore.
So let me ask right now. I know Cheryl spoke to some of you, but how many? Can I just go down the line to see if we're all?
Well, can I, can I say something else? This is my comment.
Okay.
That we did discuss this in committee in, and it seems.
We haven't yet.
Except curriculum. Two committees. And it seems that it's very different today when committees were just last week. So I feel like the procedure was a little improper. And if it's gonna be discussed again, I, I think it should be discussed, not, I'm not saying you. I'm just saying what just happened like in the past couple hours about everyone changing, you know, their, their whatever, conversation or whatever. But I think it should be brought back to committees and discussed in committees with other board members present, or we can discuss it now, but.
I said we discuss it now.
We did discuss.
We've delayed it for long enough. I'd say we discuss it now.
I think we should discuss it now only because either we're doing it or we're not doing it.
Exactly.
So are we doing it? We have too much to do this summer to be piddling back and forth. So we have to make a decision whether we're doing it.
And, and just to say, we did talk, I'm sorry to cut you off, Kim. We did talk about it a few months ago and we did discuss that we would bring, we would revise it in the summer. So it's not a surprise to anybody. We all decided that.
So are we?
So let me ask, let me go back to.
Well, are we discussing just the food? Or are we discussing the staff and the food? Because that I think would be different for other people.
Well, I would think you'd have to discuss making sure, you have to ensure that if the different companies, what they, like, if there's a company that don't take our employees, that company's out the door.
Absolutely.
But I don't understand why this is even a conversation. If we haven't had complaints since Joe came in.
Well, let's find out.
We have had complaints.
Since Joe came in?
We've had complaints. It's just that Anne Marie Leiter hasn't been coming to board meetings.
So one, but one person doesn't make a whole change.
One person was speaking for a number of students. Remember, she had a page where they displayed the food.
We are not signing a contract tonight. We're just exploring.
And we're just asking for a conversation.
That's all we're doing. We're asking to explore. Can you, board president, can you just find exploring? Are we talking an RFP? Are we talking just reaching out to companies and have them submit to us what their, what their packages they have to offer?
I don't, well, Sharon, you can take this over.
We can just discuss with companies or we can go out for RFP. I mean, we could do either.
I would like, I would like presentations because for us to guess without a presentation from different companies, how?
And one second from it, Cheryl.
Right. I'm sorry, what, Daniel?
If we're not all on the same page at the moment about the proper steps, nothing hurts to reach out to certain companies rather than going through the formal RFP process. We can come back together with the data that we have. We can come back together with the data that we have. And then if we have over, if we move through with the RFP process, we can do that at a later date. That's just my suggestion again, but we're free to discuss.
But isn't it the majority right now? Aren't we voting based on the majority?
Well, the thing is that we had a majority and then-
But it changed.
But we're not voting on anything.
No, 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 but I'm saying we still have a majority just to even proceed to move forward.
But it was a-
It's currently only six people that can, that can, yes. Six people that can move the conversation forward.
We are, we are, we are asking for a conversation with the company so we can learn more about the company. So we could put everybody on this dais at ease. So when we, if we have to present it to the public, we know what we're presenting, and we have accurate information as opposed to us guessing what was gonna happen. So we're asking for a meeting of discovery to learn a little bit more about this food service company that's gonna, that is gonna come in. Companies, excuse me, thank you, Skip, that are gonna educate us on the different types of food services that are out there, so we can make a decision whether or not we wanna go to RFP and/or keep the current food service that we have.
Exactly. So Sal, you're in favor of doing this?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of discovery.
Yeah.
Discovery, yes.
Yeah, discovery, Skip?
Discovery, yeah.
Okay, Cheryl, yeah.
Yes.
Jack?
He can't, right?
Oh, you can't, I'm sorry.
I can speak for myself.
He can speak.
I thought it was a conflict.
He can't vote, he's not voting.
Wait, wait, attorney's answering.
He can certainly discuss, but he's not going to vote.
Right, okay.
Right, he can discuss, you can discuss.
Right. Thank you.
Put the microphone in.
So are you, you want-
For discovery, I'll listen to it, but that's, I'll be back.
Exactly. Yeah. And Kim, you're not for discovery?
No, if it's, if it's for food services, absolut, if it's for bringing in the food, yes. If it's for having our employees work for another company, absolutely not.
Okay, all right, so that's what we'll do. We'll move into discovery for that.
Thank you.
We'll talk tomorrow about it. Okay, where was I?
I'm finished, thank you.
You promise?
I, I said what I said.
No, we're, Skip, so. Cheryl, did you talk?
I did, yes, I did.
And Kim, you talked? Okay, so now it's your turn.
All right. Speaking of food-
Only one person talk at a time, please.
Speaking of food, as you can tell, I'm definitely a foodie. And if you ask Mr. King, there were some rumors going around about the quality of food at the school. And I came in about six months ago, right? I had everything from a peanut butter and jelly sandwich to pasta, to salad, to fruit, to vegetables. I had about eight different items on my tray. And I sat in Mr. King's office and I ate it and I sampled it. And it was absolutely, absolutely awesome. It really was. And I haven't heard complaints in a while with this new food supervisor we have. But as a board, we still have the duty as an elected official to look at every possible best option for the public and for the students, whether it be financial, whether it be the quality, whether it be the nutrition value, no matter what it be. And we're just exploring. We're not signing a contract saying we're going with XYZ company. We're gonna bring a couple of different companies in, let them do a presentation, look at it and go from there. So that's where I'm at on that. On a more serious note, on a more serious note, I don't know if anybody's watched the news or not, but there was a horrific tragedy on Monday in Franklin Township with a special needs student. And I work with special needs students, and it hit pretty hard. So a prayer to that family up there, also those two Newark firefighters that we lost. I'd like to thank Mr. Polino and Mr. Conde down there for being service, public service. I don't know if you guys realize or not, but Mr. Polino's with the first aid department and the police department, and Mr. Conde's with the fire department. So thank you, guys, for your service. Seabreeze, I'd like to thank you for that, and that's it. Enjoy your summer, guys. Oh, great speech. I'm sorry, what was your name with the glasses in the back, please? I'm sorry? Awesome job speech.
She's done this before.
You made eye contact, you looked at us, you knew your speech when you came up. You didn't look down at your phone a once, and I'm super proud of you. I wanna see more out of you one day. Great job.
You will, I'm sure.
And also, the rest of you did a good job also. But she did not, she stared us down, gave us the look. And I'll tell you what, when you give somebody a look when you're giving a speech, it really helps a lot. So for future purposes, you guys, practice speech a couple times. Try not to look down all the time, but you did a great job. All right?
We have problems here, sitting here, as long as we've been here, a lot of us, and it's hard. It's hard when you have a lot of people in front of you to talk. So kudos to you for doing a good job, yeah. Anything else, Skip?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna make mine very short. Just make sure that you send the petition to Dr. Pereira, okay? I wanna thank the high school administration and the middle school administration and central administration for our wonderful graduations this year. We were in and out of those graduations so quickly, and yet each student had their time in the spotlight. It was wonderful, so great job, thank you. We, Seabreeze, thank you so much for that donation. The, in the conference room, in the board office, it's stacked with all these supplies that they'll give, be giving out to the students, so thank you so much. We had our board retreat yesterday where we were setting our board goals for 2023, '24. I can't believe we're saying that. I'm, for some reason, I wrote nineteen something the other day. Nineteen, that was twenty-three years ago. So we, we had a three-hour meeting working on the goals. And thank you, board members, for doing that, coming and doing it. And I wanna thank the negotiating team for your time and efforts with the negotiations. Enjoy the rest of your summer, it's going so quickly. And I see the suntan, so I know some of us are getting out in the sun. But enjoy that last month before school starts again. And at that, let's move on to our new business. Ready?
Yes.
Item one, meeting minutes. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, Peters.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
I need to abstain since I was not here.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Number two and three, ratifications of final list of bills for the 2022, '23 school year and list of bills for July 2023. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Who was that, Frank?
Frank, will you be the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Yes, but I need to abstain on Verizon Wireless 283300, Dr. Pereira 950450, and Mr. Zalinski 950460. I believe that was the only ones.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Armato?
Sorry for yelling, I thought you called me, yes.
It's okay, thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to abstain on Manchester BOE 172, I'm sorry, 173251.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
On number two, item number two, I'm gonna abstain on bills 950927, 950460, 953843, and 950450. And on number three, I'm abstaining on 158725 and NJPSA 205700.
Thank you.
I believe it is.
Yep.
Good?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next items four through six, budget transfers for the 2022, '23 school year, budget transfers for the 2023, '24 school year, and S-1701 reporting. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next motion, items seven through thirteen, sale of solar renewable energy credits, ratification of memorandum of, of agreement with the LTASA, Ocean First Bank John Ives Scholarship, Lacy Township IDA grant for the basic and preschool, preschool expansion aid submission of application and statement of assurances, settlement agreement, and district purchasing manual. Could I have a motion for items seven through thirteen?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes, but I need to abstain on the number eight, the ASA contract.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Uh, yes on everything, no on number eight.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
I have to abstain on number eight, I'm not, I can't vote on that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, items fourteen through twenty-five, award of contract for managed print services, New Jersey State contract purchase for education messaging platform, renewal of Brightly software, renewal of discovery education, renewal of Savis, renewal of Follett School Solutions, renewal of Brain Pop subscription, purchase of educational goods and services, learning A through Z, purchase of Rubicon Atlas subscription, purchase of student data warehousing software, purchase of educational goods and services, Studies Weekly, and purchase of NWEA. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question on number sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, you said?
Sixteen. I'm just throwing this out there. This school dude, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's just a website where you go on, where you have a problem in your classroom, or maybe it's an issue or something like that, correct? And you submit a work order, correct? It sends that work order, it sends it to facilities guys, or to the computer guys, whoever it might be. Once that work order is filled, an email goes back and it's canceled, correct?
Pretty much. It also does our facility use stuff. So when somebody wants to use the high school or use an Elbrom-
Oh, they log onto that, okay. So soccer wants to use the field, or rec wants to use something else, okay?
Yes, it's also the-
All right, thank you. I mean, that, that's, that's probably two people's salary, right? That what it's doing for thirteen thousand dollars, and probably, if we didn't have this, it would be two people that would be handling that schedule with it and realizing it.
It does the billing.
And it'll say, sorry, sorry, that day's filled, you can't use gym that day, somebody else is there.
It does the calendar.
Does all that.
Yeah.
We don't have to enter that, it does that automatically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items twenty-three, twenty-six through thirty, sale of dispos, or disposal of assets, appointment of special education related services providers, approval of staff-approved providers of special education related services, NJ DOE Lacy Township bilingual waiver, and job descriptions for administrative assistance. Roll call, I mean, motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
I have a question on item number twenty-seven and related services. Can I get a, an idea of what activity sessions for life skills program is that Gladiator's doing?
Can I answer that question?
I would love to.
Because I had a twenty-minute conversation with Dr. Pereira about an hour before the meeting when I saw myself. It's for these, correct me if I'm wrong, it's for these special needs students.
Eighteen to twenty-one.
Eighteen to twenty-one students that put them in a, they used to go to the YMCA and it wasn't working out for them, the distance away and what was happening there. And it puts them in a gym-type atmosphere, correct? Where they learn how to socially, emotionally go to a gym and interact, and how to act at a gym.
And how to apply for a gym membership, and how to use the equipment, how to interact with their peers and people in the public. To life skills activity.
To life skill.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, good.
So are you a yes?
I'm a yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to say that, didn't I?
Yep. Uh, Mrs. Claus? Yes. Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item thirty-one, state responsible transportation for the 2023, '24 school year.
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes to everything but, and I'm not sure, you have to tell me one. I have two noes for HIBs.
Oh, we're only on thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, yes, yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item thirty, thirty-two, use of facilities. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item thirty-three, policies and regulations. Motion, please?
Motion. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items thirty-four and thirty-five, harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Move.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Is this, uh, the ones that we went over tonight or is it ones from last month? What are they?
So thirty, thirty-four is tonight.
Okay.
Thirty-five is last month.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank. I was gonna ask the same. All right.
So you said thirty-four is tonight, just to clarify.
You've heard them tonight, thirty-four. You affirm them from last month and thirty-five.
You got that the other end of the table?
Yes.
Did you hear it?
Thank you.
I'll send up a smoke signal.
You got it.
Are you a yes or a no?
Jack will put it out. We didn't do it yet.
Oh, we don't have a? We have the motion. We, I didn't do roll call yet.
Motion, Peters.
We have it. I have it. We just need to re-
Oh, roll call. We had discussion ready.
Mrs. Armato?
Okay, so thirty-four, yes except, two noes. No for one oh two four four and no for one oh two four six.
One oh two four four, one oh two four six. Okay. Mr. Conde?
Yes on thirty-four. Abstain on thirty-five. I was not here.
Mr. Armato?
On thirty-four, I will say no to one oh two four four and one oh two four six. Uh, yes to the rest and thir- and yes on thirty-five.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Uh, ditto what Mr. Armato said.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
Yes and yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Sharon, can you just clarify, did the motion pass number thirty-four?
Yes, it passes.
Okay, uh, next item on page nine is B, donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters, and thank you. I don't know who this anonymous donor is. Hopefully, I don't have to see anonymous donors last year because we don't know who it is, but-
Yes, it is.
It is. How do you know that if it's anonymous?[1480.61]